We're ready to go, Chelsea?
Yes, we are.
All right. Hello, everybody.
Hello there.
Hey, Brian.
Well, call us mean or. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda, case number S U B one twenty-one and case number P A R one twenty-one. First item of business is to approve the minutes for March twenty-second. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that, Brad.
All right, second it.
We have a motion and seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. The first order of business is public hearing number S U B one dash twenty-one. It's a request for preliminary plat approval for phase three of Sunset Crest Estate subdivision. The criteria applicable to this request are set forth in both North Bend City Code Title Seventeen subdivisions and Title Eighteen zoning and Chapter ten point one-two North Bend City Code transportation facilities and improvements and Chapters ninety-two Oregon revised statutes. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria. The applicant bears the burden of proving that the applica- applicable criteria have been met. The applicant in the matter is Wayne Shrunken Construction LLC. Tonight's hearing is a de novo hearing. Any person may testify or present evidence during this hearing. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record at the following, but at or following the final evidentiary hearing before this commission. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each of the issue. Persons wishing to address the planning commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes per person with preference being given to North Bend residents and non-resident business and property owners. Any group of three or more persons sharing a common viewpoint on a subject wishes to address the planning commission during the time of the comment, the group may select a spokesperson who shall present the views of the group to the commission. Written testimony in the form of petitions, letters, etc. may be presented to the planning commission for consideration. That look at will be allowed to make their presentation. While their person speaking in favor or against application shall have three minutes, the applicant will then have five minutes to rebut in their testimony. Does any member of the body need to disclose any conflicts and interest or ex parte communication with respect to tonight's hearing?
Yeah, I do, Brian.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Is there anyone else that needs? I mean, I've visited the, uh, I've seen the location just because I used to live over there. I used to walk in there, but I haven't done anything in regard to this application.
I got a letter because I live on Palm Island. Does that matter at all?
Um, I don't. I would, I would ask the chair to ask you guys whether you feel that you can make your decision based on the information presented to you today and not any of your prior experiences or your.
Does anyone, what do you feel about your decision on tonight's application? Does that letter influence you at all?
No.
Okay. So, hearing no one else having an objection to anyone's, um, so no one in the public wishes to object? I can't tell because I'm out there.
Um, yeah, Chair Gould, there's no one here in opposition or, or objecting.
Okay.
And just to make me feel better, can you also tell us whether or not you feel you can listen to the evidence without inflicting your prior experience with this space on it?
I feel like in, uh, my visit to the site years ago does not influence my, um, objective this tonight. So we'll now hear from the, um, city of North Bend. Chelsea, are you ready?
Chair Gould, I'm here. So, in this case, it's preliminary plat approval for phase three of Sunset Crest Estate subdivision. Um, phase two was actually fairly recently back in twenty-eight approved and completed. Um, this, this proposal will take a piece of property approximately nineteen acres in area and create seventeen lots for single-family dwelling use and there'll be a remainder parcel of about thirteen and a half acres that will be reserved for a future phase development. The property is in the R seven zone district, which is for single-family dwelling use. So, um, this is all makes sense. The applicant is Wayne Shrunken Construction LLC, which is, um, why our commissioner Shrunken has recused himself from this public hearing. And the case of this subdivision, some of the highlights access will be from Laura Lane, existing Laura Lane and McKinley Street. The future extension of Melanie Lane as shown on the proposed preliminary plat, I would say, is page twenty-seven of your packet commissioners. You should have, um, a copy if you want to look at it and it's available online for public review. But it shows the Laura Lane, the, the extension of McKinley Street into Duane's Drive. Um, the proposed Melanie Lane, you can see all of that. The, the plat, with the plat, they do propose full street improvements, including the pedestrian facilities that would, would be dedicated to the public. Also, there's areas of easement for sanitary and stormwater facilities. In this case, the criteria is that you show compliance with, um, Title Seventeen subdivisions, Title Eighteen zoning, Chapter ten point twelve transportation facilities and improvements, and Chapter ninety-two of Oregon revised statutes. And you can see on the, in the staff report and in the recommended final order, starting on page seventy-three of your packet, it goes into further detail on, um, the recommended findings. And if there's any questions, we can go over those, um, in a second. I want to just touch on the notice. Notice was sent to owners within a hundred feet of the subject property and also to affected agencies. And we received just last week notice from two property owners, one at eleven eighty-three Crocker Street and one at twenty-seven D six McKinley Street. Um, the concerns revolved around drainage. They didn't want to, this, this subdivision to adversely affect drainage. And to that end, um, this property eleven eighty-three is at a low spot in the, um, in the area. And this proposal is not changing the natural drainage. That's when you would have, you know, issues if you're changing the natural drainage. And it's not changing the natural drainage path and it's actually proposing to contain the, the surface stormwater on site. So it should in theory better the drainage, you know, it shouldn't be a problem for this property owner in the future. They also had a comment about, um, the construction methods used to compact the sandy soils, concerned that the vibration, what kind of impacts that has on existing homes. And, uh, that happens to be really outside of the land use arena and it's a building code and engineering code, um, standard requirement that they have to meet. And so, uh, that will be left to those, those experts, you know, as to what method should be used. And if there's any, you know, if something were to happen, then the liability would be on the contractor, the developer. So certainly they'll want to do what's best for everybody involved. The property owner at twenty seventy-six McKinley, they commented that they were concerned about increased traffic, that they had purchased their property at the end of McKinley because it was kind of at the end of development. That they also mentioned that people use this site currently for, um, walking their dogs. And they wondered if anybody had thought about the impact to those people. Um, and so I would say with respect to the, you know, the use of the private land by people walking their dogs, um, there's nothing here that would say that the private land owner has to, you know, accommodate that in this case, but they will be putting in, you know, full street improvements and pedestrian uh, facilities to sidewalk connectivity. So they can certainly use that, um, in the future. The traffic subdivision, through the subdivision process, developers are required to connect to existing streets. And so in this case, that McKinley Street connection, um, is one that's required and the traffic impacts are addressed in the, um, staff report under findings for section ten point twelve, point oh five oh through oh seven oh, which say that this, this development isn't going to have an impact on traffic that would trigger warrant, uh, an analysis and mitigation. Um, in North Bend, the trigger is five hundred, um, daily trip in. And this is, would generate approximately a hundred and sixty. So we're not really near that kind of traffic impact. They also had a question about the distance between their property and the subdivision's property line. And I'll just for the record, it's thirty-seven feet. It's a, and it does remain public right of way that, that area. So other than those two public comments, we, um, staff and other agencies didn't have any other concerns other than the kind of technical requirements. You have to meet the requirements of the code. And so you'll see, uh, a list of recommended conditions of approval, the kind of bullet point, the section and the code requirement that must be met prior to the final plat approval. So, um, we do have the applicant's representatives here tonight for questions, but as you see in the staff report, staff finds you can approve it subject to those conditions. And if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to discuss.
Uh, anybody have any questions for Chelsea? Uh, Ron?
This might be. This might be better addressed by Wayne. I'm wondering why we're changing, why we're not extending McKinley Street, but rather we're giving that little section there a new name, Duane's Drive. I, I don't know what the statute is on that, but it should be nice if it picked the name McKinley Street.
You answer that or does Wayne answer that?
Uh, Wayne Shrunken, nineteen seventy-five Cleveland Street. Um, Brian, I assume that's you talking through this thing that's buzzing and everything?
Ron Cootch, Commissioner Cootch.
Oh, Ron did?
Yes.
And what was his question?
He was just wondering why McKinley Street was going to change from McKinley Street to Duane's Drive and not just be continued.
Okay. Uh, basically because I've changed, I put all the names of my kids and grandkids on there. And, uh, we went through that with, in the first major, uh, plat for the whole project. And we had to submit the names to the county and everything, uh, for all the roads. And it was approved at that time because there was many roads around the area that are won and then they change, uh, such as Coos Bay Boulevard, Skyline, uh, Sherman Avenue. That's all different names and we have a lot of those cases around. And so, but basically, Ron, that was done because I wanted to have the names in the subdivision named after my kids and grandkids.
Well, I can certainly understand that. I, it just seems like a little tiny short street there to change the name for such a small area. But I, I just thought that I would mention it. I'm going to call it McKinley.
I actually appreciate the fact that you don't have to drive from North Bend to Coos Bay back in North Bend again to get back to this property. So that'll be nice too.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and, uh, the only thing, it's pretty cut and dry what it is. And so the only comments I would have is that the, as I already mentioned, there was, uh, the preliminary plat for the whole twenty-eight acres that now we're doing phase three of eight potential phases. Uh, we do smaller phases so that we don't overbuild the market, uh, at any one time because there's other builders that are putting in lots and stuff also. So we, we try to keep them around thirteen lots. It just worked out this one here needed to be the seventeen lots. And I believe, uh, as far as the, as Chelsea already mentioned, we've already taken care of the, uh, things with her that the, the city requires and that'll be, that'll be done. We don't have any problem with the, uh, list there of the, that they say we need to, uh, fulfill. Uh, that won't be a problem at all. And as far as the neighbors go, unfortunately, um, the construction practices are for the vibration of the sand and everything to get it to a compaction level that is necessary for the, to meet the, uh, city's requirements. And, uh, we have to use it. And unfortunately, if there is a problem, if someone's place does get, uh, damaged, well, then they just need to talk, talk to us. And, you know, we're there to take care of it. Like Chelsea said, the liability is on us. So, uh, that's it. And so, uh, other than that, I don't know if anyone has any specific questions other than Ron had?
Wayne, is that, um, is that, are you going to have to fill that in already or is it up to elevation for what you have planned here on your application?
No, it's, uh, there's quite a bit of fill that's going to come in from up on the top of the property. Uh, we need to lower the up above part because it was over two hundred feet and the water line only goes to two hundred. So we got to get rid of the sand up there and we're going to bring it all down and fill in the hole down there. And that's why, uh, we have to do it in lifts and we have to compact each lift. And, uh, and so that's, yeah, we're going to be filling it up.
You have a, I know that in the past you had a problem with, uh, neighbors with sand blowing. Is that going to be mitigated this time? You have a plan for that or is it going to be a kind of train wreck like last time?
Well, uh, I usually talk to the neighbors. I talked to the one the last time, uh, when there was a problem. It, uh, went over, met with them, talked to them and, uh, he, uh, he apologized for his, uh, outbursts that he had. And, uh, I just told him if he had, if any damages, just let me know and we'll, we'll, we'll surely take care of it, you know?
So Wayne, then you do plan to have an additional subdivision down the road?
Uh, Sunset Crest is the only one I'm going to be completing. And, uh, it'll go as the Randall brothers were, I'm teaming up with the Randall brothers. And, uh, once they build this out, the, these seventeen lots will probably go for two, maybe three years, depending on the market conditions. Uh, and when they get close to finishing up that, like right now, they're real close to finishing up phase two. So we need to get phase three in so that they can continue building and, uh, bringing in the, uh, homes, uh, for North Bend. And when this one's done, when phase three is done, then we'll go into phase four. Yeah.
So maybe at that time, Duane would like his name on a longer street.
Yeah, yeah. Duane would like to, Duane would have liked to bid on the whole thing, just name it all, but.
So maybe you can give him a, maybe you can give him a street to be named at a later date.
Yeah, and all the other, all the other streets in there have, everything, all the names have already been, uh, approved through the, uh, county. So.
I think Duane's getting ripped off.
All right.
Any other questions?
Does anyone else have any, uh, questions for Wayne? Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf or on support of the application? You will each have three minutes. If so, or Chelsea, is there's not anyone there to speak in favor or?
We have representatives from Civil West here, but they're mostly here to answer questions. Any technical questions you might have? Any technical questions you might have?
Does anyone have any questions for Civil West? Right, so, um, does anyone wish to speak neutrally on this project? Or anyone in opposition? Is anyone there to speak in opposition, Chelsea, other than the letters we received?
No.
Since they're in the record, we don't need to do anything with them, do we?
Um, no, they're, they're in the record and we, um, addressed them.
Okay. Would staff or applicant, I guess you don't need to rep but anything? Is there anything you need to add, Chelsea?
Um, I'll just touch on the, the question about, um, the destabilized soils, you know, how, what are they gonna do if there's sandblowing? Um, so that is a requirement of our code that in this, throughout this development, that they do stabilize the soils and it is actually condition of approval number two. So, um, it should be taken care of. We're requiring a city excavation grade fill permit be, um, issued, uh, applied for and issued for this. And that will help the city to manage that site for that purpose.
All right. Do any members of the commission have any further questions for parties before we close the public hearing and begin deliberations?
Um, I have one question, I think it's for Chelsea. So you're asking us to approve it with the 16 conditions?
Yes.
I was just wondering.
Anyone else? So we'll close the public hearing and open deliberations on, um, case number SUV 1-21. Commissioners, what's your fancy? Ron, are you happy with, uh, everything?
Well, except the name of the street. No, I, I don't wanna take that away from Duane. I just, I guess one of my pet peeves is driving from Cus Bay Boulevard to the Skyline to Sherman to all those different, but that, that's okay. Um, no, I, I think that this is an excellent idea. We have a shortage of housing. Um, this will relieve some of the pressure on that. Um, I, I would be happy if at some point, um, Wayne considered maybe a multifamily development somewhere. Um, but as far as this one, I think it's an excellent idea. It's a great addition to the city.
Thank you. Does anyone else, um, located there in the council chambers have any? Oh, I can't get that screen. Do you have any comments, anyone else?
More curious, I think, for Washington Street? Is that gonna be punched down during phase three or is that gonna come at a later?
No, Washington Street will not be completed. It's just gonna be an easement from the top all the way down.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, hearing no more comments, I guess I'll take a motion. I have lost video for some reason. I can see it, but I can't get it.
I'll make a motion to approve application for case file number SUV 1-21 based on the information presented by the applicant and the responses and findings in the staff report and proposed final order subject to the following conditions of approval set forth in the proposed final order for case number SUV 1-21 enumerated as numbers 1 through 16.
A second.
A motion and a second. Do a vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, some sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Wayne.
Can I turn back in now, Brian?
What's that?
Can I turn back in now?
Yes, yes, please. Now it's time for the advertised public hearing on the matter of case file number PAR 1-21 request for preliminary partition plat approval. The criteria applicable to the request are set forth in North Bend City Code, Title 17 subdivisions and Title 18 zoning and Chapter 10.12 North Bend City Code transportation facilities and improvements and Chapters 92 Oregon revised statutes. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards applicable criteria. The applicant bears the burden of proving that the applicable criteria has been met. The applicant in this matter is Pony Creek Development LLC. Tonight's hearing is a de novo hearing. Any person may testify or present, present evidence during this hearing. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record or the following, the following evidentiary hearing before this commission. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements of evi, or evidence sufficient to afford this body and the other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Persons wishing to address the planning commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes per person, with preference being residents and non-resident business owners. Any group of three or more persons sharing a common viewpoint on a subject wishes to address the planning commission during the time forecoming, the group may select a spokesperson who shall present the views of the group to the commission. Written testimony in the form of petitions, letters, et cetera, may be presented to the planning commission for consideration. The applicant will be allowed time to make their presentation. While other persons speaking in favor or against application shall have three minutes. The applicant will then have five minutes for rebuttal testimony. Any member of this body need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications with respect to tonight's hearing? Ron, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now hear from the staff who will go over the staff report. Chelsea?
Yeah, so commissioners, this is another land division case. In this case, it's for a partition of, um, the vacant land that is just north of Pony Village Mall. Uh, this is, um, the applicant is the owner. The applicant is Pony Creek Development LLC. Owners are Jeff Marano and Scott Lewis. I believe we have Jeff online tonight who will be available to talk and answer any questions you have. In this case, the partition will be dividing approximately 19 acres of land into three separate parcels that will be for commercial use properties in our general commercial zone district, so that, um, that works. The access will be via the signalized intersection at Virginia. That's the primary access point where you can see on there proposed, um, plat which is page 144 of the packet, that they are proposing a roadway that will come off that signalized intersection and come into about the middle of the property and provide access to all three parcels. There will also be secondary access at Marion. The property happens to be subject to many special overlays, the floodplain zone overlay, our tsunami hazard zone overlay, the estuary zone overlay and the airport overlay. Um, so it's a complex, uh, property. The criteria again is, um, found under North Bend City Code Title 17 for subdivisions, Title 18 for zoning, Chapter 10.12 transportation facilities and improvements, and also Chapter 92 of Oregon revised statutes. Regarding the notice, again, proper notice was given, posted in the newspaper, online, also sent to affected owners within 100 feet of the property. We have not received any comment in this case. The comments from the city staff departments and outside agencies, um, mostly again related to the technical requirements that need to be satisfied to, for the preliminary plat. So on page 145, starting on that, of the statute of the packet, you'll see a list of conditions of approval, all simply, um, pointing to the, the criteria that needs to be satisfied prior for approval to preliminary plat, prior to final plat approval. In this case, um, one of the sticking points is regarding the criteria under North Bend City Code 17.24.010, which speaks to the land, land divisions needing to show conformance with city's development plans. And in this case, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan is applicable where the city has, um, planned for a public multi-use pathway to go through this property. Um, and so when the city is not saying that, you know, maybe an easement necessarily needs to be dedicated on the face of the plat, somehow the applicant needs to show conformance with that criteria. And so you'll see that that's very simply a condition of approval that the, the plat does show conformance, um, with that. And we can kind of hash it out later, you know, whether it's just a simple statement. Applicant, I guess I should add, applicant has suggested putting that, uh, responsibility on future developers. It makes more sense at that time to deal with this. Unfortunately, it's not, it's not a criteria for developers in our building permit process. It's a criteria for the, right now through the land use process at the time of land division. So somehow we wanna address it now. So whether it be a statement on the plat that just says, you know, future development is subject to this criteria, should comply with this. Something like that is what we're, we're kind of looking for. You'll also, um, note requirements for pedestrian connectivity and such. Uh, those, those need to, compliance needs to be shown and understand that the future development is not all set in stone now. But prior to approval of the final plat, we'll need to figure out how to, uh, satisfy that through this process. So there, so you'll just see there's a list of conditions of approval. Um, for the most part, I think the applicant is, uh, okay. Understands those are all just pointing to the specific criteria. And we can figure out on the things we don't agree with, how to best, excuse me, uh, meet the criteria. So ultimately, in this case, I think that planning commission can approve subject to those conditions. Um, but if, uh, planning commission has any specific questions, I am here in Crystal Soji. Applicant's representative is now here too, to answer questions. Yes, Commissioner Shrum.
Um, I still have a question on that number seven, uh, deal as far as the pathway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that for all shoreland, uh, property? I thought that trail was only for down on the waterfront, uh, from Cus Bay to North Bend.
No, this is, well, this is actually just a, I think it's part of our Pony Creek Greenway Trail and not the, not the boardwalk.
Okay.
So it's different, but it is in the Parks and Rec Master Plan as an adopted, um, part of the city's plans for the future.
I think that actually came up before the connect the boardwalks paths became the new thing that everyone was into. The Pony Creek Trails been out there waiting for someone to develop so we can try and get them to open it up for daddy's, for 20 foot.
Is there any, uh, criteria on it? I mean, um, there's gonna be roads going in there. Those, the sidewalks on the roads, that's not sufficient trail enough? They need a trail out by the water? Is that what the goal is?
That's the hope, but we, again, and we had, we talked about this last week. We don't know. We just know that what we, what we do have for criteria right now is that they need to demonstrate that they understand that the park's plan will apply and that nothing in their proposed plat is going to get in the way in the future of whatever kind of wheeling and dealing the city does to try and make that path work.
Okay.
So we're not asking them to lay out a path. We're just asking them not to preclude this path at this point.
Okay.
Chelsea had a question about that. It's in the comments that you sent us this week. It sounded like they were gonna oppose that. They said it was a takings of private property. Is that not the case?
That is not the case. That's not the case. No, the, I had, um, asked about the idea of an easement. You know, would they be open to that? And their response was no. And so not that an easement was the way to satisfy the requirement, but that was an idea and their response was no. And so we still just need to come to some kind of final.
So that was just in regards to an easement?
Correct.
Okay.
Even an easement would not necessarily be a takings. The, the information, um, that, uh, Mr. Marano provided is accurate as far as it goes, but it's about 30 years old. There's just a lot more that goes into the analysis.
Where can we find the park's master plan overlay at?
Yes, it is online under the city's very, very intuitively easy to find, um, Public Works Department, Planning Department, and then the city's functional plans. It's, uh, listed under there.
That's not in our plat, maps, in our book?
No, it's a, it's a large document by itself, but it is available online.
So was the applicant amenable to having something on the plat that stated, um, that this would have to be? Is it, you said that was maybe a possible way? Were they amenable to that or?
I don't, I don't know.
I think we'll have to ask that question of them tonight.
Okay. That could be...
When, when the, when the landowner purchased the property, was this master plan in place?
Um, it's my understanding that it was.
Yeah, this one was, it went in in the early 90s, right?
98 at least, since 98.
So he knew of all the aspects of this property when he purchased it?
Well...
Or should have.
Should have, yeah.
Cause he read his disclosures, I'm sure.
It's a, the only thing that concerns me is it seems like it should be a little bit more defined for him. It just seems like it's a loose end, uh, that you could say, well, we, we want an 80-foot wide path. And what's gonna hold?
Twenty, I think we already had that somewhere in a code section.
Yeah, Wayne, um, the criteria for the public multi-use pathway is a 20-foot wide area that would allow, I believe, a 10-foot wide path. So there's some standards when you get into the, the design of it. Um, but as far as showing compliance or conformance with the plan, it's kind of open to leave some flexibility between both staff and applicant.
It just seems to me that 20, 20-foot down there is, um, a lot of valuable property, uh, for that amount, amount of area. These are, are we allowed to make it, uh? I mean, if, if, what is the intent? Just to have a walkway? Can we reduce that down to eight-foot maximum or something?
So for one thing, like Chelsea just pointed out, anything that they build is gonna have to have a 20-foot setback anyway.
Or they have put, identified a 20-foot setback on their plat.
But they could have parking back there, fenced in parking. You don't, that, the parking lot doesn't have to be, uh, conformance to a 20-foot setback. Then...
No.
And they may have freight trucks, a lot of other trucks that they're gonna park in the back inside a fence, cyclone fence, so people can't rip them off. And so if they can't put that fence out there to 20-foot, it seems like we're taking a lot of their land. If our heart is only to have a seven-foot pathway, can't we make it a, a maximum size that would be more favorable? And then, then if, if you guys end up going, well, hey, our sidewalks are only five-foot, so let's make it five-foot. Well, it doesn't have to be the eight-foot.
So the problem is the standards that we're starting with come from a plan that was developed and implemented a long time ago.
Okay.
So it's not like we can just be like, well, the plan says this, but we like you, so we're gonna take it over to this. We don't have that kind of discretion in the language in that area.
Okay.
And as far as, and, and that's kind of why we told them, um, you know what? Just make sure you don't preclude this for now because we can't say, hey, show us where your path's gonna be when they don't even know where the buildings are gonna be.
Yeah.
We're not demanding that. We just want to keep the pathway that's in the plan in the planet.
Okay, so basically it is, it has to conform to that 20-foot. Uh, and then the city will, when they actually do it, the city may be able to say, hey, we only need five-foot or eight-foot. And then they can fence out there, they don't have to lose that whole 20-foot.
I can't speak to that. I can only say that right now, we're only asking them not to preclude the pathway.
Okay.
When we move forward, you know, they, we made it very broad when we said we wanna keep this option open. If they have suggestions, we're happy to look at the suggestions. You know, like, we're not gonna be tyrannical about it. We just wanna make sure that it doesn't get ignored.
Okay.
I just have to ask, is there anything about number seven where they, I don't wanna make much ado about Duane. I mean, have they said that this is gonna hinder their ability to develop this land?
Um, you know, unfortunately, I have to go back to this is the criteria for the land division. land division process, that you have to show conformance with the city's development plans. And so, you know, albeit they don't have development, you know, they don't have their own development plans right now, the city does, and the criteria says thou shall show conformance.
Yeah.
So I mean, this isn't like a huge sticky point, is what?
Um, well, it shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
Maybe it's a question for the applicant, but are they willing to conform to that?
I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah. We should, we can probably have to ask them when they, it's their time to talk.
Yeah. And so we can certainly, Chair Gould, we can have time for the applicant.
Definitely want to hear that.
Time for Jeff to come in. Jeff, please give your name and.
Yes, Jeffrey Marino, 510 Highland Avenue in Cus Bay, Oregon. How's the audio?
Right.
Okay. So this, this project got started back in middle of 2012, and Scott and I bought the property. And first of 2013, began to work on the stoplight, which took four and a half, half-years to complete, finishing that project in October of 2017. Right after that, we put the property on the market, have had a number of interested parties, actually a hotel last year in March of 2020, which unfortunately, hotel developers pulled out of the marketplace immediately when the COVID-19 kicked. Subsequent to that, due to my connections and efforts by Joel Sweet, we've connected up with a party, Devin Bryce, local dentist, who is very interested in taking up a self-storage project on the west side of the property, which is something that I know is financially feasible. It makes a lot of sense because of the occupancy type and because of the navigation easement on, on that side impacting height. So because of that interest, we have developed this partition into the three properties. And I think you guys have access to the mapping that we proposed, which includes a 70-foot, 75-foot right-of-way into the center of the property, and then moving to the west, there's a 60-foot right-of-way, all proposed to be improved to city codes. I can direct you to the conditions that were in your findings and facts and that the city has laid out to us. And hopefully, you have our applicant responses to the proposed conditions of approv, approval. You have that information in your packet.
Yes, we received them.
Okay, so that, that particular, those responses is an important read for the commission. I hope, hopefully you've looked at them. Basically, we have agreed to every single condition for, there's 32 of them, I, I might add. They're all doable, with the exception of number seven, number 29, we have addressed as an issue in which was initially proposed for a 20-foot right-of-way across 1,400 feet of the property along the boundaries. So that, if you calculate the square footage there, average price of about 10 bucks a foot, there's $280,000 real estate that was initially asked, asked for by planning staff. After considering some of the court cases and conversation, obviously inside the city, they have chosen not to require an easement. And in our responses, Chelsea has, has an email to us, and that's in your packet, in this case, you need not provide an easement, as I suggested, which was the 20 feet by 1,400 feet in length. So my personal opinion is that this Park's plan was written, like many plans in city government, was developed across this private property without thinking about the impacts to the private property, or how the city could implement a right-of-way across private property. That's exactly what it is. It's a right-of-way in favor of the city. And in my business, we call that a taking. It's just like if you live in the county and you have five acres and the county wishes to take a right-of-way through the middle of the property, they don't just come out and take it. If there's a particular public need, for instance, a road, they will talk to you about the need, and then they will hire an appraiser to value that right-of-way, and they will negotiate and pay you for that right-of-way. This easement is a right-of-way in favor of a public agency. So there was comment earlier about the fact that we need to provide some sort of language that does not preclude this connectivity that they're interested in. I'm open to talking with the city and negotiating some language that addresses that. I can't, we, we do not have it in front of us. We do not have details, but I can tell you, we can work on it with planning staff and obviously the city council. So I'm open to questions.
Jeff, I have a question.
Sure.
So as the, uh, conditions for approval are written, are you willing to agree to that tonight, or is that an open-ended? I mean, you haven't agreed with them, but I mean, as written, is that acceptable?
Well, I guess I have to defer to the, so I'm, I'm willing to accept all of these conditions, except seven and 29, which need to be discussed further with staff. So that, that can be a finding on your part. It could be a condition on your part to approve the application.
Well, is there any other questions? Anyone?
I guess I'm struggling a little bit on how we could approve this if number seven and number 29, you need to have further conversations with the city prior to agreeing to that. I guess that's just kind of where I'm, I'm, I guess I need to think about it more. And maybe that would be part of after we close the public comment period, but that's, that's kind of where I'm stuck right now. If those are two conditions of approval and the applicant is not willing to agree to them without further conversations with the city, I'm not really sure where that leaves us as Planning Commission.
Jane, the way I'm, I'm trying to picture this, what our, our position is, we can't change, if I'm understanding it right, we can't change that ordinance, but we can let this thing go to another month and let him come in and work out something with you before we deal with it and put it on hold, or we can approve it with these conditions and in the sense that you're going to be working with him like you did with the logging place down on the boardwalk. When they put that in, we moved it from there all the way out, and then when they put the railway in, I believe we moved it to the other side of the road. We've done a lot of moving to accommodate the businesses. The hard part is, is when you're, you're trying to, or Mr. Marino is trying to base it on, okay, yeah, I'll do that for you, but he doesn't have anything solid in writing or whatever.
Well, the solid in writing stuff that we proposed was too much, and, and his reasons for it being too much made sense. Like, we couldn't say we want a solid easement that's laid out right across, you know, the waterfront there, because they don't know, I mean, they don't know what they're going to be doing with the land yet. There's, there's no way, and you don't know if maybe at some point this path could also be used as access for some of the business that's there, or as part of the exit to get to, to get out of the tsunami zone or one, the other.
Yeah.
There's so many requirements. The point is, we knew that it would be really hard to have something firmer at this point, but we're stuck with this code that says we have to deal with it.
I agree. I agree. We're, we're stuck with that.
And, yeah, I would add that those two conditions of approval are very simply reiterating what is stated in the code.
Yeah.
Under those two sections.
Yeah.
So trying to leave it, like Jane said, broad enough to work out, I don't know that it can get any more specific. You know, right now, until they, I don't know how you get around 29. I, I, I don't really know how we, how we futz with that. It's the pedestrian pathways.
Oh, never mind, sorry.
Yeah. So, I mean, so I, I hear the applicant's concern, but I just have to reiterate that they are criteria for the land division.
Yeah.
And so, Planning Commission could approve it, subject to conditions that they meet the criteria for the land division, or they cannot, and applicant can try to address it, you know, but I don't know, you know, I guess it's up to the applicant how they want to do it. They could address it at time of final, you know, between now and time of final plat, based on the conditions, or they can, you know, take a step back and.
Yeah.
Try to think it.
Hey, hey, Brian, Crystal would like to speak, I think.
Okay. Crystal, you're on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, please come forward and identify yourself and your address, please.
I didn't even know if I was supposed to come in tonight. Nobody knows the rules nowadays. It's just that, this is a partitioning, and this is bare land, and it's going to be bare land.
Take off.
It's going to be bare land when the partitioning is done.
Identify yourself and then pick up your.
Crystal Soji with Soji Planning, and I'm working with Jeff Marino, who is the applicant. And I, I did appreciate one of the things that Jane mentioned, because there's probably some possibilities that this could be done in conjunction with other things. Your codes also say a lot of things that can't be done. They say things like, orient it with building openings, and do this, and do that. I mean, it's kind of written like it's just a catch-all for how you do an easement, like something's happening there besides just bare land. So, you know, there's a lot of things that you can't comply with in the code, because they say a lot of things that don't make any sense with what's being done with this land. I think that some things could be done later, possibly. If there's a development going in, there's going to be tsunami pathways and things like that. There's nothing that says that that has to be out in the middle of the prime land, or that it even should be.
Right.
That even that's where people want to be. So I, I don't, I don't have the answer probably that you want, but I certainly don't, I don't think that you have to do a word for word, because you're not doing a word for word anyway with the code. There's all kinds of criteria in there that you can't comply with. So that's, that was just my thought when I was looking at this.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor, or does anyone have any questions for Crystal before she? I kind of had a question for Crystal, just if you'd come back. I mean, so Mr. Marino was mentioning using a storage facility, is that something that, when you're really wanting, want to have a public street or walkway going through the, behind it, or through it? That'd be kind of the purpose.
It hasn't been designed yet.
What's that?
It hasn't been designed yet.
Okay. Okay.
And no, of course you wouldn't want a walkway right through it, but there may be some way to utilize a pathway in addition with it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is anyone neutral there, Chelsea?
There's nobody else in chambers with us.
Is anyone in, online who rebuttal towards it, or against the project?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
All right, does anyone else have any questions for staff at this time, before we close the public comment and open deliberations?
I, I suppose I do. Chelsea and/or Jane, are there, are there any examples of this proposed walkway in other areas of the city, for instance, to the east or west of this parcel?
We, this is the first, I think this is the first one that we've dealt with right on the, on the bayfront since that went into place, except for the, the, the one that Wayne mentioned, which is not exactly the same setup, but we worked with the tribes so that we at least could have some signage for the board, the, the connect the boardwalks trail. Although, say it again.
It wasn't an adopted plan.
It wasn't part of an adopted plan, so that, I guess, it's not really the same scenario.
So the, the properties directly to the east of this then, for instance, I'm not sure what's over there, but there's some restaurants and a car wash and some things. Is there a plan for a walkway over there?
The Park's plan has that walkway, remind, tell me if I'm wrong, I'm remembering this from like, really getting into it three years ago, something like that, but it, I believe the plan is to have a connection as close to the bayfront as we can get it, all the way from like Simpson Park Ferry Road area, all the way around our little peninsula over to Pony Slough and that area.
Is that right? Right. So, so this, this proposed pathway does implicate more properties than this one.
Correct, but, but to your knowledge, nothing has actually been done on any of those.
No, nothing's been developed in this area.
There's been no, no land divisions recently.
Well, correct, there's no land divisions, but there's existing properties there.
Correct. Right, but those, these, this, I believe, kicks in when there's a new development, right?
Correct, right, and it's specifically the land division process.
So let's just, let's just say Gino's Pizza, because it's my favorite pizza parlor. They don't need to comply with the walkway?
We, in that scenario, we would, we would like, you know, we would like to see something, but there's nothing in the code that says thou shalt.
There's nothing that says that in order for them to make a move, that we approve, they have to have a path. But once this thing comes together, I mean, we're not, I don't think that there is anything that says the way that the city puts this path together is, is only by one method. I mean, it really is, this is the plan, these are the ordinances that we went through all the process with the LCD to get in place. These are the ordinances that we went through all the process with the LCD to get in place to implement the plan. They're all laid out. Now we just need to do some development so that the ordinances attach. And that's kind of where it stopped, from what I can tell.
Twenty-three years ago.
Yes.
We made the plan twenty-three years ago and we haven't done anything.
Correct.
Let's say, for instance, Gino's Pizza wanted to do a tear down and start over, they'd have to apply to this, apply and abide by this, correct?
Would they have to do a land use?
Development.
So if, if Gino's tore down, first of all, it would not, you know, is that a land division process, or are they just redeveloping the property? And there's nothing through the redevelopment that says they need to show conformance with the city's development plans. Now, there are requirements to have pedestrian connectivity, and the city would, you know, likely certainly encourage, you know, facilitating that pathway. And at that location, I'm not exactly sure where, where, you know, it falls on the planned map, but there, there's two different criteria. There's criteria for a land division, and then there's criteria for actual building development.
So if Mr. Marano and Lewis weren't dividing the property, we wouldn't be here tonight, is that true? I'm, I'm sorry, we wouldn't be discussing this, this particular issue, is that true?
No, we, planning commission would not accept this issue.
I'm sorry, you cut out there, Chelsea.
Said, no, planning commission would not be deciding on this issue.
Okay, so this came up because it's a land division?
Correct.
Or partition, okay, okay, I understand. Well, I guess I'm, I'm just struggling to see why a land partition enacts this particular rule when someone who's, we'll, we'll just say, I, I know the folks who own Gino's Pizza, they bought it after nineteen ninety-eight. But they don't need to have a, a walkway there, even though it was purchased. I, I don't see how the city parks plan can make a walkway along the bayfront if everyone doesn't have to play by the same rules. Does that make sense?
I think, if, if I'm understanding it right, Brian, they're not changing, everyone is playing by their same rules. Gino's buying a, they're, they aren't dividing the land up, so it's not a land use issue. Whereas right now, because he's dividing the land up, it's a land use issue. And we, and it's not our place as a planning commission, if I'm understanding right, that we can't just say, hey, we're not going to enforce that code. We don't have a choice, we have to enforce that code.
Well, I mean, we can say we're not going to enforce the code, but then we open ourselves wide up to a very expensive loss of a lawsuit.
Yeah, and it, it, it's the, like what you're getting to, Brian, I believe, is, is kind of the pitch that Jeff's having to put or give up that twenty-foot of land in there, when none of the other places, the houses all over there by Thompson, Don Thompson's buildings, the school bus area, all of there, all the way to Simpson Park, who's going to be giving up the land? And, but even though, even though it doesn't make sense that we enforce it, we don't have a choice because it is the city code. What Jeff would have to, have to do, if I'm thinking correctly, Jane, is that we can approve this this way, and he, then he can just not go any further with it, or try to work something out with the city as far as what his plans are. They're asking right now, they want him to just recognize that he has to do something. And if I understand the city right, that the city would work, are, is the city able to work with him the way they worked with the boardwalk? They're two separate entities. But you guys really bench your back out for down there is, you know, I, I would think that's the only thing that Jeff would have to do. But I don't think there's any way we can vote against the code.
I, I guess my problem is more with the, the parks plan in this area than than what we need to do for the code here. So, anyway, I was, I, I understand better now. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you for that. And Chelsea and Jane, too.
Maybe we, maybe it's something that we really need to look at, that parks plan again. You know, to see how realistic is it? It'd be after the fact for Jeff, but it could be applicable.
Maybe we should, does anyone else have any questions specifically for city staff?
We should probably.
Real quick, I was looking at the Parks Master Plan while everybody was talking, and I was kind of curious as to how many properties this would actually apply to if somebody else were to, and it looked like this was the only property that would, where there could be a division that this Parks Master Plan would apply to. So is that?
That, that sounds.
Pretty accurate?
Yep.
So this is the only, okay. That's interesting.
Yeah, it is, it is interesting.
Yeah.
Why don't we?
I must have approved it. Sorry, Jeff.
Can't blame the rest of us, I wasn't high.
But like I said, and I think, like Jane said, we're not trying to be tyrannical. We just want to uphold our code, uphold our plans, and work with the, the applicant owner, the developer to get something that says, you know, on the plat, hey, future developers, you've been notified, you know, we have this Parks Master Plan that conformance needs to, you know, uphold, and there's pedestrian connectivity that needs to happen. And you can very simply point to the section and it be on there. At least they have, through the land division process, addressed the criteria for future developers without just leaving it completely hanging.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that the city and applicant can work together to come up with some language that's agreeable to everybody.
Yeah.
With that, we'll close the public comment and open deliberations. This case number SUV one dash twenty-one, commissioners. I think we've kind of got ahead of ourselves, and we should start deliberating a little bit. I'll tell you where I'm at, I just, I think that there's still some things that they need to resolve, and maybe it might be marked to give them time to do that before we approve it.
Well, my understanding is we can approve it with the thirty-two conditions, and the plat partition will not move forward until the applicant works it out with the city. So we can approve it tonight instead of continuing it.
Yeah.
But it just won't move forward until the applicant works it out with the city. I mean, the other option is we, you know, we continue this and let them come, you know, let the applicant work with the city, and then he can pass it to come back and have another hearing and for us to approve it. So, I mean, my opinion is to approve it with the thirty-two conditions and let the applicant work it out with the city prior to the partition moving forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the best route.
Well, I think if we keep getting, they have to keep coming back and coming back and coming back, it's going to get lost in translation. We're going to forget why we started in the first place at some level, so.
Well, I, I kind of see the opposite side, the opposite side of that, in that if we need to take care of this before we approve, it's going to put an impetus on everyone to get that done, because we all want to get this done and behind us. So I, I kind of see the opposite side of that. If we, if we don't approve it tonight, probably we're going to be ready to approve it next month, because Mr. Marano and staff will get together and come up with a, with a plan. I, I just hate to see it get lost at this point.
What do you mean, get lost, Ron?
I, I would just hate for this to not be approved because we aren't able to come up with. I, I would hate to see this be approved conditionally and then the being, I'm, I'm sorry, the issue not being resolved within a month or two.
But, but Ron, it's going to be approved conditionally no matter what. It's, it's really, what needs to happen is the applicant needs to work out exactly what that looks like for number seven and twenty-nine with the city. And so we can approve it without knowing exactly what that looks like, or we can wait and have him come back and tell us exactly what that's going to look like. So it, I mean, I think that the applicant still has, you know, he wants to move forward with the plat partition, so he has an incentive to go work with the city now.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, Ron, with her on the sense that if we approve it tonight, there's two things that Jeff's able to, to do. One, Crystal mentioned it, they may find that the design is going to be a hotel or a restaurant, that they can have a big area out there that's open patio area, that that's the pathway, and they can still use it for the business. Or would they be able to even to apply for variance? If we, if we approve it, then Jeff has the opportunity to come in and apply for variance and work it out with the city to where they don't either have to do it, or work out what, what they're going to do. But I see our, the only option is to approve it, or the best option would be to approve it so that Jeff can get with the city and work it out, work out the details.
Anyone else? Kind of a, it's like we're kind of putting a gun to his head, though, just saying, we're going to approve it and you got to work, I mean, I guess we're saying if you can't work it out, then you can't proceed.
This is Jeff.
You can't actually
I mean, either way, he has to comply with the city code.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of do we, do we approve it tonight and let him work it out with the city on his own time before the partition moves forward, or do we make him work it out with the city to know exactly how he's going to address number seven and number twenty-nine, and then come back and, and go through this process again? So I just think, I feel like we're wasting, if that's how we move forward, we would be wasting the applicant's time.
I agree.
I agree.
So, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve application for case file number PAR one dash twenty-one, based on the information presented by the applicant and the responses and findings in the staff report and proposed final order, subject to the following conditions of approval set forth in the proposed final order for case number one dash twenty-one enumerated as numbers one through thirty-two.
Motion and a second and a third, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Say no. Motion carried. The that's all the stuff for me, is that correct, Chelsea? You want to have, we have no more, nothing for the business other than commissioner comments, correct?
Correct.
I'll just say, this is about the last meeting here on Zoom, I hope, and then just to warn you, Ron, you might have to sign the approval of this, in case you can't get ahold of me online. You hear that, Ron? Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comment? That word, John? Thank you.
Thank you.